Welcome to the June 20, 2018 Select Board Hearing. Ask the Town Administrator to read the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, we'll vote to amend or approve the agenda. There's a recommendation to remove Item Number Two, Consideration of Appointment. And then, Public Comment. Consideration of Consent Agenda includes Payroll Warrant, Sherburne Community Center Annual Rent Payment, and Minutes? There are no minutes. And the next meeting is July 11, 2018. Consideration of Land Use and Development Matters, Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program Listening Session with Gino Carlucci, Town Planner. And then Introduction of Concerns Regarding Windy Lo Development, 309 Elliott Street, Natick. Then Update on Planning Items for Open Space and Recreation Plan, General Plan with Mary Nutra from the Planning Board. Then Town Campus Site Plan, Sean Kline, CM&amp;D Director. Consideration of Financial Matters, Financial Update with Sharon McPherson, Finance Director, Town Accountant. Then, under Routine Business, Town Administrator Report, Selectmen Reports, and Adjourn.
Just a question. When did we schedule all the year-end transfers?
Uh, this is July 11. July 11. It'll be a joint meeting with Advisory.
It has to happen before July 15.
I understand that, but all of my towns are doing stuff when they can. So, we're gonna hold everything until...
I would imagine Sharon will review something.
Yeah, I mean, I can...I've been sending out like a weekly update on where we stand.
Holding everything. The next meeting is July 11.
Yeah, I understand. The problem with holding everything is if there's an issue or a question, there's no tomorrow, then.
Right, right. But we don't have another meeting scheduled. And right now, it looks like we'll be okay. And we're asking people to come in, anyone who needs a transfer from those departments to come in.
If something comes up, we can schedule a meeting the week of the 25th or July 2nd?
It has to be done by the 15th.
On the 15th.
But, so you'd have four days.
Why don't we provisionally schedule another meeting?
Hmm?
Why don't we provisionally schedule another meeting so it can be posted and we don't have to worry about it?
I mean, you can do the 12th.
Um, the Thursday is July 5th. That's a holiday weekend. Would it make sense to schedule it tentatively for Monday, the 9th? Is that enough time? That's two days before the 11th. Or do we want to do it the week of...
Oh, I was thinking after the 11th, just in case something comes up as...
Is there a certain, is there a certain issue that needs to be brought in that has, that we're thinking of, needs to come in that night?
No, but I've been at, I've been at, one of the advantages of being around for a while is I've been at meetings where the, the Advisory Committee and the Board don't agree on something. And then, now you're January, June, July 20th, 25th, trying to backdate things. I don't want to backdate anything.
I think we could, I think Sharon's probably made the Advisory Committee aware of what's coming up and there's no, and she's telling us, there's not any large issues that are out of...
Well, maybe the Advisory Committee's aware of it, but I haven't seen it.
No, that isn't, she's telling us, she sent a financial report today over email.
Yeah, I've been sending them out every week.
She sends a financial report.
I'm just, I'm just thinking if, if the issue is that you might not agree with Advisory, you might want to set the date after the 11th, not before it, because you won't be talking to Advisory until the 11th. Unless, we can try to convince Advisory to schedule something earlier, but I don't think that that's, I don't think they're meeting earlier than that.
I don't think they're meeting again till the 11th.
So, there was a report today?
Yeah. Sent it out.
Sharon's got a report today. What's that? She's been, Sharon's been sending these reports weekly.
Yeah.
Just kind of show where we're at.
Yeah, the, so, I thought it was the library project. Sorry.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, I've been just sending this out every week.
So, I didn't open it.
Where we stand.
I would propose if we have a meeting on the 11th already scheduled, that we tentatively schedule a meeting for the 12th, that we don't have to keep. But that way, if, you know, Paul's doomsday scenario comes up on the 11th, we have a meeting on the, on the 12th where we can fix stuff and David can, David and Sharon, in between the two meetings, can figure out what's going on and give us some advice.
Okay. That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Terrific. Why don't we schedule a meeting then for the 12th, recognizing that we're probably not gonna need it? Terrific. Do I have a motion on the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Gino Carlucci, our Town Planner is up. On the, the next item is a listening session about...
Do we have to do the consent agenda or no?
Oh, thank you.
You have to at least give the consent.
You have to, yeah, you're right. I was reading the vibes. I'm anticipating a vote. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Great.
That's exactly, I was getting...
Oh, wait, before we forget, the reason why I asked for that item on the agenda is to remind me, because I've been carrying around $1, which is the rent from the Sherburne Community Center. Ta-da!
Last year, we got a check.
Could we have a drum roll? So, who do I turn this over to?
I can't touch cash.
I'm not allowed to touch.
Heidi has to take it.
Heidi's the only one that can touch cash.
This is a receipt. Wait, this is a photo.
Where is the envelope?
And a turnover?
So, it's gonna cost $25 to process the $1 in rent?
I was going to say, it's on cameras.
Thank you.
Terrific.
Thanks, Paul.
Gino, the, yeah, Paul, thank you for going to the annual meeting where that is, that is proffered. Gino, the Listening Session on Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, would it be better for us to be out in the audience or...
Yes, because it's going to be a presentation.
Okay, great. All set.
Huh? Go back there. Somebody needs to be here. Oh, wait. I'm gonna find it. Okay, so, the Municipal Vulnerability Program, Preparedness Program is a state program that's designed to address climate change impacts. It's set up similar to green communities and complete streets in the sense that you go through a process of becoming certified as an MVP community, and then you become eligible for grants. Only certified communities are eligible for the grants. So, as part of the, it's, it's somewhat similar also in focus to the Hazard Mitigation Plan process, which is also in the final stages for Sherburne of being completed, except that it focuses on climate change impacts and not all types of hazards. We had a, but because of that connection, we had the, kind of the primary players in the Hazard Mitigation Plan process also participate in the core team of the MVP process. That, that would be Sean Kline, Chief Thompson, and Chief Kenny, and myself, and Alary Braich. The main, the main components of the program were to hold a public workshop, which we held on April 10th, and we invited town officials as well as certain stakeholders, Mass Audubon and citizen groups. And we had about 16 people here on, on April 10th that went through and developed, identified vulnerable areas, as well as came up with a list of priorities, which we'll go through shortly here. And the, the final step in this certification process is to have this Listening Session, which we're doing tonight. So, with that, to get into more background, we'll turn it over to Mary Monahan from Fussin' O'Neil, and Kevin McGarry is also an engineer from Fussin' O'Neil who's here if, if any technical questions arise. Mary?
Hey, thank you, Gino. And thank you. So, brief introduction, as Gino said, I'm Mary Monahan. A couple of you might remember me from a number of years ago. I used to appear before your board and I did some of your MS4 work. So, I'm back, and we're talking MVP, all these acronyms. And as Gino noted, there was a grant opportunity about a year ago, and the Town of Sherburne took advantage of it. And Fussin' O'Neil, as your project team, we helped execute an MVP program for the community. So, my background as part of this project team is actually in municipal management. I'm a former town administrator, public works director. As people tell me, my skill set is I'm able to get that engineering and/or design project to fit into that, those public constraints and opportunities. And we use that a lot in this MVP process. And as Gino noted, Kevin's with me tonight, and all of this ultimately leads to some priorities that may require some engineering support and/or construction. And you'll see how we got there, and you'll see the decisions that the town made in getting you to that point. So, I'll introduce briefly the MVP. We'll talk a little bit about climate change. I'll discuss with you the summary of findings that came out of your stakeholders and your residents. This is a program that reflects the needs of Sherburne, not, not the Commonwealth of Mass or any other community. And then, we're gonna talk about the next potential funding program that having an MVP designation means to the town. So, it's, it was exactly a year ago that the Commonwealth of Mass issued their first round of MVP grants, and the Town of Sherburne was one of 66 within that first round of grant programs. A total of 71 communities are considered MVP at this point because five of them had already gone through enough of a climate change and resiliency process that they got automatically certified as MVP. This is a very prescriptive process. It's not something the scope of work that Fussin' O'Neil imagined, or any other consultant or regional planning agency. Those of us who have supported these MVP projects needed to go through day-long training in order to understand the process and making sure that all of the outcomes reflected the input from the community. As Fussin' O'Neil, we have eight of our staff went through this training, and we completed 10 of these MVP programs on that first cycle of 66. And we just recently were successful in getting six additional communities funded to begin the same process that you're now completing. So, this approach required us to work with your stakeholders, to consider climate change in the context of your infrastructure, your society, and the environment. And at the end of this is a final report, which has already been distributed to the, Gino, you got a copy of it. I put hard copies on the Select Board's desk tonight. And it's basically a road print to, blueprint as to how you're going to begin what you did to identify those priorities and what you want to do to address those priorities. The good news, back then, it was people would laugh at me and say, "Yeah, the state's never gonna do this," is the Commonwealth of Mass promised at the time that if you were designated an MVP community, you were going to get enhanced access to state grant funding programs, and they were going to begin developing a specific grant program for MVP communities. And they did do that. So, six weeks ago, they came out with their first MVP action grant. We'll talk a little bit more about that later after we review your priorities, but what that MVP action grant did was it provided almost $3 million worth of grants to MVP-designated communities who had completed the MVP process. You weren't quite there yet, so we weren't able to bring you through to a grant application at that point, but we were able to, in our others, in six of our other communities, assist. And there's an additional $800,000 that six of our MVP communities received in grant awards. EEA, who runs this program, has said that for communities like Sherburne who were in the schedule, not ready to submit an application, they anticipate another grant round coming out in July. So, we look forward to working with Gino and the rest of the town in submitting an application to fund your priorities that came out of this process. So, this is the project team. These are, these are the folks in your community that participated in the discussions, beginning with a, an initial core team meeting, and then Community Resilience Building Workshop process, which we held in this room on that April date, and it was a good five to six hours of discussions. The, the conversations were, were unique and they were cool, and having done 10 of these, I can tell you that many communities share a lot of concerns, but also many communities, you hear the uniqueness of each community brought out in these MVP planning sessions. So, brief intro to climate change. Again, we're going back to the prescriptive process that the Commonwealth of Mass decided for this particular program. So, climate change is only three things. It's, it's raising temperature, rising temperature, its changes in precipitation, and its sea level rise. And Sherburne only has to worry about two of those. So, back to the support given to these communities in order to make this program consistent from one community to the next, the Commonwealth also contracted with the Northeast Climate Change Center in order to look at climate change impacts throughout the Commonwealth. There's always been data out there. The data has more or less stayed the same, but they wanted to apply consistency amongst the communities. They wanted communities to look at the same data source when it came to identifying and projecting what those impacts might be. So, I didn't bring it with me, but I got a three-ring binder that's about two inches thick that contains all of this data. So, instead of you guys having to go into the weeds, I did. And I pulled out what I thought was relevant to the discussion. What does a community need to know? So, these data sets drilled down into the watersheds. Instead of the Commonwealth of Mass, this is the issue, this is the concern within the Charles River watershed where Sherburne's located. So, you're looking at average changes in temperature, projected changes of temperature. And we're starting with a 1971 baseline to 2000, so that's already 18 years old. So, it's showing you, if you look at, I like looking at the second line, the annual days with maximum temperature over 90. In-town, it's about nine days a year. If you start looking across at the projected increases, by the 2090s, on the low side, those days will increase by 15 or as much as 75. And in the report, it identifies the reason for this discrepancy. It's based on estimations of the reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. So, the more reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, the more you're gonna see that lower number play out. The, the greater increase in it, the higher number is what's projected to, to play out. And also note on the, go ahead, sure.
The projected changes in the 30s, 50s, 70s, and 90s are all against the baseline.
They're all against the baseline.
It's not against the previous time slot, right?
Correct. It's against that baseline, yep. And the other, on the lower chart there, you're looking at how much warmer you are getting. So, right now, you're about five days a year below zero. Those numbers of days, days are going to reduce. And what you're not seeing, but the workshop participants saw this, there was some significant discussions about what does this mean to a community when, when, when things get warmer, when, you know, you have residents, especially elderly residents or other residents at risk that may not have air conditioning. That's gonna change that need for air conditioning. When you have a power outage in a summer storm, and you've got long, long time, it's super hot, air conditioning again becomes important. So, again, there's consequences to quality of life. You look at crops and agricultural operations. Warmer days are going to affect the kinds of crops that are grown. It's gonna affect the growing season, and it's also going to affect, you know, there's a lot of horse farms in the community, and I'm sure horse farmers are well aware of what those, that heat might do. So, then the other thing we looked at, based on the projections, was changing precipitation. So, the total increase in precipitation isn't as significant as the fact that this changing precipitation is more of a reflection in changes of the types of storms you're getting. Storms are becoming more, more intense. There, there's more rainfall in a given storm. There's more energy in a given storm. And they're becoming, they're spaced further apart. So, it's, it's great to have a consistency in your weather pattern, but what we're seeing now is that spacing far apart is what encourages the drought situations. So, in between those more intense rainstorms in the summertime, you, you increase the risk of drought. Again, another effect on crops, another impact on, you know, water supplies, another impact on even agriculture, more agricultural operations. And another impact on, the other thing we talked a lot about was ticks and other illnesses associated with this changing dynamic. The tick season is longer, ticks aren't dying off, there's other pests that are coming in that are affecting trees and crops. So, it's more than just it's gonna be wetter at certain times or it's gonna be hotter. So, this is the background that served the discussion when the group then began discussing for several hours. So, how do we think this is going to affect residents and other operations in Sherburne?
Can I ask you a question about the data since that seems to be the basis of the means? Is that what you're looking at?
Oh, God, you're asking, I'm building, I think so. I'm taking the scientific data.
Do we know what the ranges or anything like that are?
I don't, but I can, I can send you that detailed report. There's a detailed scientific report that supports all this. If, if you want me to, I'll get you the link.
It's part of evaluating what this or the other thing means, if you don't know.
Yeah. This is the basis.
What baseline is.
Sure. And the state wanted this data used as the basis for telling that story. More of, you know, this is what we're projecting based on the scientific data and other research that's out there.
This may be too deep into the statistical weeds, but is there a confidence in incidence ratio for those projections?
Yes, when I read the report, again, all of this aligns with all of the other data and reporting that's been going on. So, none of this is an outlier. I think, it was an attempt by the Commonwealth to have one data source to go to. And it's not telling a story that's any different than most of the other reports out there that have these, these impacts projected as a result of climate change.
Gino, what the confidence interval is for?
I do not. Yes?
Last time I checked, the conservation commissions across the state were divided over what precipitation figures they should use for stormwater designs. And I understood that DEP was gonna sort through that and come out with either sticking to the old precipitation rate or go to a new precipitation rate. And that was maybe a year ago, the last time I involved in it. Has DEP taken a position today to increase precipitation rates?
So, I think you're talking as to what the standards were in the state's stormwater handbook? Are you referring back to that? Okay. I'm not aware that they have finalized that yet.
Do I have to come up and ask you?
You may. Kevin would know that answer is a...
So, when we do stormwater design, there's sort of two parts to it. There's the pre and post, which we're using published rates for. And again, as long as you're using the same rainfall in existing as proposed, you can get a very good handle on, you know, are you increasing your peak runoff, which is one of those requirements in the stormwater handbook? The other number would be to like size culverts and pipes and stormwater infrastructure like that. As a firm, we've been using, I call them the Cornell rates, because they're on Cornell's website, and those rates are higher than what has been typically published, and that's what we've been using at least. But I'm not aware that DEP has come out with a plank and guidance on, in the last year at least, about what storm events to use.
That means they're still using the old standard?
I think they are, because that, I, I'm still doing a lot of MS4 work, and that's a, that's a major discussion as to the MS4 requirements do not necessarily reflect the state's stormwater handbook, and it's creating some confusion right now. The MS4 requirements are a little bit greater than what the state handbook is, and Fred Sivian at Mass DEP continues to, to talk about the fact that they've been looking at updating that handbook.
But wouldn't it make sense, I mean, all of us, like in a town like Sherburne, have to deal with culverts, culvert size and all that kind of stuff. If what you're projecting here is anywhere close to being true, then we are making design decisions erroneously now because we're not, we're not planning this.
Sure. Hopefully, your consultants are taking into account, because, I mean, this is real-world stuff. This is not, and the governor has issued that all state-funded projects, design projects, you know, he's embedded climate change impacts throughout his, the whole state operation. So, if you're working with Mass DOT now, can't tell you what standards they're using, but I know that they're required by the governor's office and others to take into account climate change impacts within their design standards and even citing of projects. So, don't see any opposition to that? I mean, Eric, you might...
You can also, if anyone's putting regulations, people just stay where you want it, which is three of them that are kind of out there. And they put the middle one in there, which is more conservative than the on-the-what standard that's kind of been used in the past. You know, so if you're certain people want to actually control it here in Sherburne, we can actually just put it in our regulations. You have to adhere to it. Exactly.
Another question. As you mentioned, these, the observed baseline numbers are 18 years old. How have those changed? Do you know, have any idea how they've changed since this?
I don't know how they've changed, but I know that when I would point out they were 18 years, I, it took, my first MVP workshop, someone said, "Wow, we've got more hot days than what is on this chart from that past one there." And I said, "Yeah, because it's 20-year-old information," so...
Are they gonna update that though?
I don't think so. I think they're gonna, I don't, I think, I mean, this costs, I'm sure, a lot of money. So, it, this is, like when we were in the training, it was, it was told over and over, "These are projections. These are the baselines you want to tell your stories from, you want to take your plans from." It's not meant to be exact. It's not, it's not even a forecast. It's a projection based on things that may or may not happen. But I will send the link to the report. So, what I handed out tonight and electronically the town has, and it's already been submitted to the Commonwealth, is a copy of the summary of findings, which is what came out of that workshop process. And one of the first things in the workshop a community was asked to do, there's a number of climate change hazards, and within your community, what, what does climate change mean to you? What, what is Sherburne most concerned with? And this, this group identified flooding and precipitation, storm events, especially storm events that included wind, drought, and extreme temperatures. So, those were the four, the four hazards that moved the discussion forward during the rest of the day. I have pictures here. Worry about that. Okay. So, I'm gonna briefly go over the summary of findings, and then Gino and other core team members are gonna talk about the priorities that came out of that discussion. So, what hit hard were your culverts and bridges, and the concerns from your CDM director about whether or not they were designed appropriately for current events, whether they'd been maintained properly over the years, a whole bunch of things that he felt there were issues with respect to a major storm would, would damage them even further, or additional flooding would occur. So, culverts and bridges became a number-one item. Beavers. And I was surprised at how many communities have beaver problems, and there's some beaver issues as well. And they do provide that unpredictable flood risk. And unlike, you know, the rest of us who want to build stuff, they don't get permits, and they can do it wherever they want to do it. So, so the, the, the beavers and where they choose to build their dams contributed to the potential flooding issues. Your drinking water supply... Your drinking water supply. There was a thought that it may be an insufficient supply if there were an extended drought. Hazardous materials transport. You have rail that comes through town as well as vehicles that might be transporting hazardous materials. If you had a climate change-related flood event, wind event, trees down. Emergency management was concerned, we don't necessarily know what's in those trucks if an accident occurs. Septic systems. Title fives don't always work in flood situations, and they may not work also in long-term drought situations. So if you have issues with respect to Title V, you know, either seepage or not doing what it's supposed to do, those are other issues. We talked a lot about the campus center here. There's been a long-term need to identify opportunities to get a public water supply or wastewater, maybe a community septic system located here, but that became part of the discussion. And then roads. In the absence of culverts working properly, washouts and other issues, extreme temperatures can create the potholes that you saw with the winter storm events. You've got the ice in the snow, ice, snow and rain. So those are what ended up on the table with respect to the infrastructure. And then environmental concerns, water conservation, trees and forests. I worked in several communities and that was talked about here as well. And in an extended drought period, you've got that, a significantly increased risk of forest fire. Open space. Open space is a great way to manage, especially flood-related events. Open space is a great way to manage temperature. So, actually, that's something that is a, is a positive for the town. I remember that discussion occurring, that there's significant open space that can be used as a resource when it comes to climate change. And then the invasive species, economic and environmental damage. If you were, had a farmer growing crops, those species, you know, those particular critters, pests or whatever could destroy the crop. I was just noting on a news show last night that there's a certain section of central Mass that is still being inundated by the gypsy moth. And the public works director was contributing the changes in temperature to him not being able to get it to move out. Back to pest and disease control, ticks and mosquitoes. The warmer weather in the summertime doesn't allow for the ticks in particular to die off. Stranding of commuters. There was talk about how, when floods occur, certain roads could potentially become impassable. So you might have folks stranded and surrounded by water. Vulnerable populations. What are you going to do about seniors who, with wind effects of power outages, with flooding effects? Do you know who they are? Do, do you know the resources that they might need? And then back to the agricultural impacts. I don't know, do we have maple sugaring in town? Okay, so, so as noted, the, the town has a lot of strengths. So, you, you own a town-owned forest reservation. You have control over a forest management plan there that could help mitigate wildfire risk. Again, back to, there's a open space and recreation land available in town. I mean, that, that helps protect against climate change risks. And when we talk a little bit later about green infrastructure being used instead of hard infrastructure, your culverts, bridges, those are great points to divert excess stormwater flows and reduce flooding. You, you know how to plan for things. There's a lot of planning documents already in place. So, so as a community coming together to recognize this particular threat and doing something in response to it, that's not new to Sherburne. Small-town identity, that the volunteers, the folks that showed up at this workshop, they were all volunteers, they had a lot to talk about. Emergency management, which does kind of overlay this, it's still separate and unique, but emergency management is, is, is part of this whole response plan. It's robust, it's strong. I've been in some communities that don't have an emergency management plan. In fact, this latest round of MVP grants requires any new community to have an emergency management plan in order to do this. Your staff and volunteers, they know a lot. I don't have the maps with me, but there's another report I can send you, and I think you have a Gino, that I took pictures of, the markups on the maps. Folks were enthusiastically contributing to discussions, looking at a town map as a storyboard. You do have a council on aging, that does maintain a list of elderly residents for notification, but we did talk about some of that invisible population. Not everybody likes to be known as someone in need. And then Eversource was, was looked at as a partner, as a strength. They have been doing what they can in order to minimize power outages and do the tree pruning necessary. So I'm going to turn this over to Gino now and others to talk about what the recommendations were that came out of this. And you can talk, and then we'll conclude with some more discussion and some opportunities to potentially find some funding assistance for some of these priorities.
So as you can see, the, the, the recommendations relate closely to the concerns that were just reviewed previously, including the first one, conducting a comprehensive study of water resources, including, as they relate to culverts and bridges and their capacity for handling stormwater. Comprehensive plan for beaver management. Eligibility for MassDOT's municipal small bridge program, maybe a source of funding. And again, being part of this gives us extra points on any state grant program. Reviewing and revising town regulations, as was discussed previously, we may need to update stormwater management regulations and the, the design storms that we, we would use to evaluate. Implementing forest management plans. These were the highest priority actions that were identified at the workshop. Then we moved to the, the moderate and lower priority actions, which were transportation resiliency planning, always acquiring new open spaces as a priority, green infrastructure opportunities, invasive species management, hazardous materials risk, and continuing to always improve the communication system, which the most recent thing, and Chief Kenny can maybe weigh in on this too, but I know the new cell tower off Lake Street is helping with that. Farm pond management plan, which is already in existence. Outreach strategy, again, council on aging has, has a lot of that in place already. Expand support for a community center. Planning to support the agricultural community. We just adopted a bylaw that will help the economic viability of farms, hopefully. Maintaining small-town culture has always been a priority here. And conducting public outreach on impacts of climate change. So we do expect, I know that both Sean Colleen and Chief Thompson are at a public safety committee meeting, and they expect to be here shortly. They could, they could weigh in on some of these priorities as well, but we also would like to open it up for comments and discussion here.
So, so one, I guess, advantage we have, or characteristics we have, which I didn't see addressed in there, is we are surrounded by larger communities. So this report looks like it's set up with Sherburne as an island, and we have to be self-sufficient, but I think we're in a pretty good position in the sense that we're in a very populated area, we're not out in the middle of the desert, we're not out in the middle of some island someplace. And I just wanted to know if those considerations were, were part of this, and I think some of these strategies need to be coordinated with flooding municipalities. I just, I said this to somebody when I came in, but I just spent 20 minutes in a, in a detour, because native block Route 16 before the Sherburne Town Line, didn't tell anybody about it, didn't put a sign further back down, and just routed hundreds of cars onto Everett Street, creating an enormous backup, which I'm not even positive our public safety people were aware of. So I think, you know, having good communications and coordinating municipalities, cities and towns really should be part of this whole strategy.
Absolutely. And that, that was discussed at the workshop, particularly in terms of reaching hospitals if, if roads are impacted. And again, we do have mutual aid agreements with surrounding towns to, to assist, but more regional cooperation certainly is, would be...
All our food sources are in the building.
That was brought up. That's the part I remember, is that even though you, there was a sense of self-sufficiency, but, yes. Is, is some of the roads that are the access roads to the grocery stores were potentially at risk during a storm event. So while, you know, those neighboring communities are both a, an opportunity and a challenge, but, and also keep in mind, if I didn't say this earlier, this is a living, breathing document. That's why we're having this hearing, because the state's been asking to revisit it in a year. So this is not concluded, this is the beginning of the session.
And the action plan, where does, is it under the transportation resiliency planning or what, where, with the public safety? We've talked about the different tree regulations and the fact that it takes so long sometimes to take down dangerous trees in this town. Where would that fall in? Because like you said, if we have a big storm and, we see, we've seen what happens in this town with the trees that we aren't able to take down, where does that fall in these priorities?
We could put that under the review and revise town regulations, if you wanted to develop and adopt a new regulation.
Yeah, I think it's important that we look...
Determining a timeline for treatment.
For tree, well, it's the, the tree removal plan, and I don't know, Sean, maybe you can help with this, but it's, we're talking about like public safety versus, I know the public planning board goes through how many meetings to get rid of trees or recommended trees to get rid of?
Yeah, we have an Eversource hearing, we have a town tree hearing.
How many did you have this morning?
Continued the hearing. We have one hearing, it was continued, four times.
So is this for town-owned trees or private property trees or trees in the...
Yeah, this is for town shade trees.
Town shade trees, okay.
Paul?
Just a comment about the Charles River. As you probably know, I, I own about a mile of the Charles River and constantly have all kinds of engagement there. When there's floods, there's an amazing resilience. I can have 20 acres under water, and then it will drain gradually. So if there's a threat of a flood, it just covers pasture, and then it recedes. And similarly, when there's a drop, when we've, we've had a drop...
The cows go to Medfield.
The cows, we're able to walk over to Medfield. Yeah, my cattle will, will walk across the river. We have the old Ford, it was from the 16th century. So there's a, a shallow area you can walk across and drop without getting your shoes too wet. The, the cows can figure out where that is, and they'll go right over to Medfield. But the river is amazingly resilient, is the point of all this.
Particularly there with the Medfield flats, it was just a huge...
Right. It can expand and contract. It's, it's, it's almost like breathing. So to the extent that there's a, a water challenge, it like takes a deep breath.
Yep.
And then when there's a drop, it's like it, it exhales. So it's, it's, it's self-protecting. It, it's an amazing thing to watch.
And of course, the Corps of Engineers had the foresight 30 or 40 years ago to develop the Charles River Natural Valley Storage Area to do just that, but it could certainly use to be expanded, as there are other areas that is vulnerable to flooding, that if they're set aside to serve as a buffer area, as you're describing, would go a long way to mitigating those, those big storms.
So, Gina, remind you, we have, we have a stormwater regulation, right?
Yes, we do.
I would actually put in a review, provide a regulation, this sub-bullet, to at least review the current precipitation standard. If that could, if we revised the regulation, that actually, you know, updated the precipitation standard in there, that we can actually put what required, even if the Mass D O T store doesn't come up. Because of this side comment I had, I'll agree 100% about culverts. That's the, the forgotten infrastructure in almost every community I know of, because it's not a bridge, so it's going to have D O T inspections. It's not really stormwater feature, and actually more appropriate feature than a stormwater feature. And because you can base natural water bodies, so it's something where it's under-respected everywhere.
And, and one of the positives for a community that is an MVP is there's a few culvert funding programs out there. They're not a whole lot of money, they're very restrictive. You have the Department of Environmental Resources, DER, they actually have a culvert funding program. And if you are an MVP community, you get enhanced access to funding through that program. But you need to have a culvert that fits the criteria that people...
Yeah, the natural stream water.
Yeah.
It turns an $80,000 culvert to an $800,000 culvert.
Yeah, I heard about that in a community in Beckett, out in Western Mass. Yes. So, so, but what in particular was brought up, when you mentioned the Charles River, is, is that's, that's a, a great reference to how green infrastructure can be used to, to, to affect and reduce flooding impacts. And in any future grant program, the MVP action grant, the grant requirements require a community to look at green infrastructure solutions first, before they go into the gray-built environment.
Do you hear that ground music?
You got to sing first.
Chief?
I think we should discuss some flooding and water issues too. Talking about that, because it was more around having those intense storms and dealing with flash flooding, flash flooding, flash flooding for possible erosion of culverts, washouts, washouts of roads and things like that. I think those areas, we do have some areas of potential concern, and areas in some of the creeks and woods that could potentially create that. One that comes to mind is Lake Street, where I haven't been here to witness it, but there have been times where a water has been out on the edge of a river. And I have been here for, I believe it's...
You brought up the...
There's a couple places where I have been across the road, you know, potential public safety issues. The big, the...
So what I'll do, because the, the detailed report, these are just bullets from there, does include some of those more specific locations. And I'll, I'll send it out to everyone who is on the core team in the MVP workshop. I have their email addresses, and you can all get a copy of that. And if, if there's a specific location that we didn't pick up at the MVP workshop, we can add that to the report. But I just pulled bullets out of that. But yeah, the flash floods, the flooding was identified as a hazard.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Are there any privately owned stormwater systems, like in a home association, it's on private roads, or maybe propose some of these 40B's, is there any? So, I mean, I don't know if those have, but if anything private, another issue that's coming up a lot of places is, there's always these maintenance requirements in like a home association or any kind of planning board decision that are never adhered to. That's something I would encourage, even on a high, put it on a high priority, that the town assess the compliance with the maintenance requirements, because they do eventually fail. There are some communities down south where they have cities that want to take them over because no one was doing it, and they'll fail pretty rapidly, especially if they have recharge systems in them.
So if you take it over and then you assess it back?
Well, the reason is the state's approach is...
Yeah, they could do better, that's what I call better.
So I think that discussion came up about, but if I recall right, I remember sitting over there with, at my group, talking about that. And I think one of the issues that came up, and it's a challenge in every community, is access to those stormwater operations in the absence of any sort of legal authority to make them do things.
The goal of the city, our town, not to access them, you know, but you wind up doing it.
Yeah.
Because how long is this thing? You know, you never keep on top of them, and they eventually fail. And when they fail, now all of a sudden, no one cares.
Mm-hmm.
I think what might have been brought up in the meeting was, we have a lot of outfalls that are on private property, and a lot of them were at least pre-'70s, and even the ones in the '70s. We're mapping them now. We're mapping them now, but not too many of them that I found the legal easements for.
Okay, and you're doing that as part of the M S four?
Yeah.
Are you?
But it's pretty limited in town, what we've had to map to the M S four so far. But there's critical ones I've had to go out and chase.
Mm-hmm.
If it wasn't for that, we were.
Right.
Genetic.
Okay.
And you find yourself asking for permission on people's property to go try to find the end of the fight.
Right.
Yeah, there are no, to my recollection, there were no subdivisions with homeowners associations maintaining stormwater management systems.
That'd be rough.
Well, that's not, not a subdivision, but.
It would.
Yeah, but it ties into the town system. Well, no, it does have the detention basin. No, that's right, that's right.
And the road we just adopted had one.
No, Chris, no Chris Lane.
Right.
Yeah, and the Walgreens building, which I, but that ties into the town system. And I imagine the older developed commercial properties do, all tie into the town, town system.
This is sort of mentioned, I think, on the previous page as a subheading, high density development increases resiliency. It sort of tickles around something that I think we could put more emphasis on in our regulations, building regulations, like regulations only. And as any development, but particularly a high density development, the ones you've seen give some lip service to low impact development, meaning the kind of development where there are swales and green spaces and the whole development is designed to allow recharge of groundwater. The flats that we've seen come through don't really do that. There's still a lot of pavements, you don't see recharge swales, there doesn't seem to be that mindset of low impact water development.
Okay. And do you think you lack the local authority to do that right now? To make that developers?
Some developments.
Groundwater recharge is a requirement of stormwater handbook on any development project.
Yeah.
It just might be like in an infiltration system under the parking lot, not in an open.
I'm thinking of the sort of principles that are advertised in low impact developments where there's a lot more done than just catching stormwater. There's a lot of, you know, local recharge and green spaces and swales and all kinds of tricks that can be.
So one of the, and again, there's been no project identified yet, but one of the, two of the previously funded M V P action grants that we worked on in other communities could address that. If you go with an integrated water management plan, your deliverables could include specific opportunities for stormwater B and Ps and low impact development options that actually reflect your town's needs and opportunities. So it's not just, here's a whole book binder full of pick one, but an integrated water management plan can actually get very specific because of soils, because of the geography, because of a whole lot of things. In this area, this is one that we'd like to see you use because we know it works and it works best. And you would also tie it to Sean's challenge with the M S four permit, because he's, he's got some targeted pollutants that the town's going to need to take care of and address when it comes to meeting their M S four permit requirements that your climate change work can actually support. But yeah, that's, that's a great issue. It's not just a handbook full of pick one, but what really works.
One of your moderate recommendations was to develop a more robust communication system. And the town last, I guess this is a question for Chief Candy and Sean, the town over the last several years has invested a fair amount of money and effort in completing cell power, updating communications equipment. What, what else do we need to be doing? I mean, I, I was a little surprised to see that as a bullet point. What, what do we need to do to have a more robust communication system? Right now, the hazard that we face or probably face from looking at the storms and the intensity of storms is if one of our repeater sites goes down, we will effectively left with a large area that's under public, we won't have a good community. We have, right now, the contingency plan for that is to use Masfire District, we have portable repeaters and, or MIRAC, same thing, we can get a portable repeater established. But that's, you know, that's like putting a band-aid on something. But I'm, one of the things that I'm working on is trying to, trying to evaluate, you know, we have the two sites with repeaters and that's their vital to the communication. So with the two sites, maybe having them set to where there's some redundancy built in where we can, like right now, if we lose one, we lose both instead of being, you know, you lose one, you still have to keep building a couple links. So if one goes down, we kind of lose the functionality. So one of the things I'm looking at in terms of, you know, evaluating risk and management of that is to try to use what we have and maybe, you know, maybe look and purchase another gateway or a portable repeater that we would have that would be portable or usable, not only in the event of a catastrophic failure, but also, you know, if we have a significant event, we could, you know, possibly provide that kind of service on site or patch ourselves into a robust network that exists like the Masfire District, the 14th and 15th system, which just requires phone call and answer information. Those are kind of things I'm looking at, you know, taking range project, you know, from the smallest or simplest, being 10,000 and north to 1000,000 dollars. So obviously, I'm looking at the, the ones that could fix it for at least a ton of money. Because I don't think we necessarily need to go to, you know, an enormous full-fledged, redundant or secondary system. I think we just need to make, we have work to make sure that, you know, generators in the back are able to be taken place. But like I said, if we get one of those T one lines properly, we're going to be, kind of, we're going to be structuring this down.
Just something I just thought of as the first noise gets stuck between the developer and the municipality. Your stormwater violence, that require you guys to go to conservation or is that what you're planning for?
Planning board.
Okay.
But conservation has their own regulations too on stormwater.
For stormwater?
Yes.
Okay. So you could very well, and maybe you guys are already doing this, but include in either the conditions, right, that you require easements for any sort, you were talking about stormwater as well. There's stuff that's already, you know, installed, fine, you know, that's a different story. But obviously, if people were informed, you could require easements. And I don't know if you guys would consider like requiring a bond for long-term stormwater maintenance so that in a situation where you have, whether it's the homeowners association, whoever the applicant is, they are on the hook and there is money set aside to address some of those maintenance concerns. Just don't tell any of my developer clients that I suggested that.
So what I have here, not, but great conversation, I've took, I've taken notes, but I'm also going to leave behind some comment sheets. So as you think about this, Gino, you're the person that would be, they'd be sending them to and you'd send them to me. But any additional thoughts that you wanted to articulate or repeat what I took in my notes here, I'll be leaving those behind. I'm, I'm trying to stick with the schedule, so I don't want to. So if there's not more discussion about this, I can bring this to a conclusion if that's, okay. So, and it's a great conclusion, it's actually a new beginning. So E E A is projecting that they are going to have a new round of M V P action grant funding in July. And those of you who are at the workshop, we talked about that because it had just come out, but you weren't in a position on the schedule to have a plan ready yet. So if it's going to be in July, you're still within that initial first group of funded communities. So your, your competition is, is limited. Only M V P communities can apply for this funding assistance. And as noted, the last round was $3 million and they were projecting this next round to be another $3 million. So I will stay alert to when that R F R hits the streets. I will stay chatting with Gino and then we will have a discussion then. You, you saw your priorities. What is that priority that you would be looking for funding assistance to move forward on? And we'll help you put together an application and you could have another project in the next two or three months.
Of these priorities that you see, which do you think is the most ready to go project?
I think the one that supports everything else, the one that gives you that better picture of really what's going on, and that's what many other communities went for, is an additional vulnerability assessment that focuses on your culverts, your bridges, even what are the beavers doing to impact this? So that you have a better understanding of what's going on with your hard infrastructure, where you have opportunities to take advantage, like the Charles River, to use green infrastructure for a solution, because that solves a whole lot of problems, not just flooding, but water quality issues. And then actually developing some conceptual designs and others that, other elements that can help move you forward quickly to actually begin correcting these problems. So.
Is he in kind, essentially, labor and kind for money? So he basically has people's time to be used to credit.
People's time, yeah. And they're very, the last round, which was also the first round, they were very generous with what you could call in-kind services, so. Yeah.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, this is, Mary, this is great. Thanks, Gino.
Do we want?
Yeah, I have, I have one thing that's in the high priority is eligibility for the D O T small bridge program.
Right.
That's in addition to, that's not.
In addition to, right. And so, you know, we would talk to Sean about, you know, the bridges that fit, the sweet spot is anywhere from 10 to 20 foot span. But being an M V P community, and if you do an initial assessment, you'll have a better understanding, better application, and you get more points because you're an M V P community.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, thank you. Nice to meet you. What town were you in? No, I just.
Eric turned the word in January.
Thank you.
Diane, I think this department would have had to turn it over to the community, I don't know. I just copied it and that's your copy now.
Oh, okay.
For Wendy Little Tress, do you want Dave to set that up?
Um, we're doing that now?
Yeah, that's the next item on the agenda.
Great, is anybody here for us?
It's just going to be a general conversation.
Yeah. Sure, let Dave set it up, sure.
Have you been to the new facilities for the MIT Urban Planning Group? It's right to the left of the main stairs.
Yeah.
It's, it's nice space.
It was always there, but it didn't look like that.
It's beautiful. I was there a couple of years ago, I was impressed on, some of the MIT buildings are pretty rundown and.
No, that was a new renovation.
What happened to David? Hey, you know who David is?
I think that's what I understood to say.
True.
Should we just skip and go to Mary Ann first?
Mary Ann, we're going to take the open space and rec plan and the general plan out of order because Dave is detained right now. So the next item on the agenda is an update on a couple of planning items, the open space and recreation plan and the general plan. And Mary Ann, are you going to be discussing both of those? Terrific. Please.
Well, I requested a spot on your agenda tonight because you haven't heard about the general plan for a while. But the planning board's been working on it pretty much non-stop and it's coming together. And I brought, I wanted you to know that the first sections have been sent to the layout and editor that you guys approved money for. And I thought you should see an example of his work. So that, I can also send this to you, obviously, but this is now, yeah, this that I sent you is in email, right, so.
It's in color.
It's in color. And since the last one was done quite a while ago and we didn't have the computer use that we have now, I think you might copy that.
What picture are we looking at this day?
Know that that is.
It's the.
In the works?
The cover sheet is draft, general plan organization.
Right.
And the next page is the natural resources and open space.
Great.
Yes, actually, the next, yeah, the next page is just one section of the general plan. And I'm giving it to you just as an illustration of how the plan's going to look. And at the end of the, at the end of this document, there's a table, which is part of the implementation tables, that will be all at the end of the whole general plan. I know that when we've discussed this before, you were concerned about, okay, so does plan go on the shelf and how do we know if anything actually gets done? I just wanted you to see the kind of implementation table that we're putting together. It will allow us, I mean, it's, it's in great detail, it's actually rather boring reading, but it does allow us to go back once a year and see actually what is moving forward and what's, and, and to remind ourselves of what we've wanted to do. So that's the update on the general plan. And I will talk about the open space and recreation plan too, but maybe you have questions about the general.
I have, I have one, but. The plan looks beautiful, is my first comment. My second comment is that the natural resources and open space provisions are probably the least controversial part of any plan. So it's one that we can all look at and feel good about, particularly a community like Sherburne with wonderful natural resources and much more open space than most communities. The part of the plan that of, of great interest to me, and I think to most people in the town, is going to be the town center section and the housing section. And so when I got this, the first thing I did was to try to go find those sections, went through all the pages and got to the end.
This is just an illustrated, illustration of how it's going to look. There's a reason that the natural resources and open space section was done first, was finished first. The town center section is almost finished. And when it is finished, we'll be sending you a, a file much like this to take a look at it.
So how are we going to be proceeding going forward? So there's all of these sections, recreation, cultural resources, circulation, all of these sections. Ultimately, you're going to have town meeting vote this?
No, town meeting is, vote is not required for a general plan. The only vote that's actually required is the planning board adoption of the plan.
I understand.
But obviously, we want buy-in. I think it's not, we, we've discussed this at planning board. And I think the planning board members here would agree that we feel it's just not feasible to take it up for a vote at town meeting, there's so much detail. And it's sort of.
we're doing with this right now.
I'm just trying to figure out the role of the Board of Selectmen in your, in your time schedule. So we've, we've had one section, which I, was a delight to read, by the way. When does the Board of Selectmen next see something, or, or next time we have a meeting like this, or will ever be?
Let us ask you, how would you like to see the plan? Would you like to wait until all the text is in place and review the whole thing? Or would you like to see sections as they're finished? What's your preference?
I have a slight preference for sections, just because there's a lot of material in here. The, I would echo what Paul said, the open space and recreation and natural resources and open space are terrific, but there's a lot of detail in here. What's, what's the sense of the board? What do other people think?
Either way is fine with me. I would be somewhat sensitive if members have, have comments, because I know, I mean, this was started, this was like two years into it when I left the board, years ago, so it's been a lot of thought into it. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have comments, but acknowledge that, you know, if you do wanna have a very major input to it, all their meetings are actually open meetings, and people can go and they can actually provide input. I think I still provide input on some of the financial section. So be, I guess be sensitive to that, and boy, if you have, if you have questions, you can ask and so on, be sensitive to major type comments. If you think you're gonna have a major comment, I'd engage in them as soon as possible.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. I do appreciate that, because we're getting comments all along. And at this point, it's not so helpful to, I mean, typos are good to get corrected, but the editor gets that, and we catch them, too. It's what we're looking for, if, if you want to give us feedback, is issues like major errors in fact, Chuck gave me one tonight, it's very helpful, I fixed it already, Chuck. Or omissions, things that you think should be there and aren't there. So I think sending it section by section, once we're happy with the text, is good.
Mostly we wanna get to you to brag. I mean, we've, we have hearings, we've had hearings on major sections. So I don't wanna reopen those hearings. So, I mean, we've had hearings with a lot of feedback. And as Mary mentioned, I've gone to boards and committees, and we're continuing, we're still doing that. I'm on the agenda for next month's traffic safety, to talk about circulation. So, so it's ongoing, and we're working on it. We wanna get it to you, we're, I'm the one that was hopelessly optimistic about how we'd simply edit the old one. And, and this, this is a much, much more inclusive and better process than what we launched.
And drafting by committee is tough. I've got some very minor typos that I'll give you, you're welcome to ignore them, use them. The only thing I was looking for was something that I thought was incorrect, and that's the thing that we talked about before the meeting.
So, so I think presenting it at town meeting is great. I love that. But, but the state specifically enables the planning board to approve it, only because, only because trying to weed through all this detail in all those different sections and deliberate in a meaningful way at town meeting is, be prepared for a month-long of meetings. Because that's about what our hearings have resulted in, that's about how much time it takes.
I also want to add to that, the goals and recommendations and action that kind of outline that you see within the section and in the implementation plan, those have been posted for, most of them have been up for a year on the town website. And that's, that train's kind of left the station, you know, at a certain point, we have to fish or cut bait. And if, so basically, I'm pleading with you not to make changes that aren't like, really, you know, major, important changes to that part of the plan, because it, basically, it creates a tremendous amount of work.
I think, since I raised the issue, I think I wanna say two things. First, I didn't raise it because I had any changes. I was thinking more about the management of the board and our ability to digest stuff. So it's like, it's, it's like a meal. And I'm saying, give us a plate that we can eat, as opposed to having a dump truck dump a year's worth of food on the table.
You must be a hungry bull.
I know, you haven't been to my family.
No, I would rather do it that way, anyway. That's much better for, for us, as well as for you.
So, I'm, I'm understanding, I guess, that the plan is now not to bring this to town meeting, to have it endorsed by the, the town meeting? I know for a couple of years, we had talked about trying to do that.
Well, I'd like to present it at town meeting, but holding up a finished document, like this is your town plan that we have together been working on these past three and a half years. But I think debate at that point on points in the plan is not gonna be productive.
Well, you know, the planning board, by the way, we posted our meeting tonight, so we're in session. And I see Addie May wants to speak, but we have talked about endorsement, which to me is different than, than a vote of approval. You know, only in that if we wanted, if, if the idea is to present it, as they say, the way each section was presented in hearings, that's a lot different than saying, you know, we've already, we, in the last planning board, the last general plan, they presented the guiding principles, effectively. That's what was presented at town meeting, nothing else.
And the goals.
See, I mean, I just, I think there's value in having the town endorse a plan that's been adopted by the planning board. And I mean, I don't think you open it up to debate, other than a debate in which some people might say, you know what, I think this is a terrible plan, I don't wanna endorse it. In which case, you ought to hear that.
Yeah.
And it doesn't mean you have to believe it, or that you can't have, can't have a plan. It would still be the town's plan if you adopt it. But I do think it's a stronger plan if the community as a whole says, we acknowledge what you did, and we think it's good. People are always gonna have something to quibble with in a plan, but, but I think that socialization within the town is important.
It's good to clarify that. I don't disagree with what you just said.
Okay.
But the idea of having a, everyone at town meeting having a copy, I'm not paying for that.
Yeah, and it's not legislation, and it doesn't have to be wordsmith at town meeting.
But before, before that happens, you know, we would like the Board of Select, the Select Board and other major boards to have already read it and endorse it, so that we have that behind us.
I think that's right. I mean, it's the, it's the culmination of that process. You've, you've voted it, other boards have, have approved it, and then you asked the town to give its endorsement. And then everybody is more bought into it.
Mm-hmm. And that's the goal.
As long as we differentiate the... Eddie?
So, I just wanted to make one reference, that the planning board did bring the goals and recommendations. In all-town meeting of 2017, and so we did present the goals, and we did present the different sections. And there were fears then that planning board was creating, and we had to remind everyone, this is, this is just vision, this is just dreams and ideas, and we're, this is not law, this is different. So, and the other thing is, is before I even came on planning board, this had been worked on with multiple working groups throughout town. So there's been a long, long process, and it's, it'd be nice to kind of get the document done.
Well, when I was on planning board 20 years ago, we were working on a general plan, too. So, it seems like...
27 years ago.
All right.
Okay, good.
The other comment, one other comment here, that I'm working with the Baker Polito administration on a land use bill that would give great weight to master plans, so that courts reviewing decisions would give enhanced protection to decisions that comply with a properly adopted community plan versus decisions that fly off the handle and are not consistent with the community's general plan. So, up until now, a general plan has been something as a general guidance documents, but if some of these changes get enacted, this would become a very important document for the community going forward.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that bill, and we hope it passes someday. It's, I know it's been in the works for a while. And we're, we really have that in mind as we wrote this plan, so.
Open space?
Terrific. Any other questions on the, on the board? Would ask you to stay for the next item on the agenda, which is a brief update on the open space plan. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not done. Thanks. Well, speaking of dump trucks, dumping a big document on you. Oh, thank you, yeah, that's better. I, I gave you a, a color copy of the open space and recreation plan that's very close to being done. In fact, this was requested 10 days ago, and now it's even more complete. So bear in mind that this now is not the absolute final document, but it's close enough for you to take a look at it. And the open space and recreation plan is a, a much more, say, lockstep plan. It has to have all of the elements in the right order as required by the state. It doesn't go to the same place as the state, it goes to Department of Conservation Services. And all of the elements that you see in this plan are required. And you'll find that there is some repetition in it, but that's required repetition, so just bear that in mind. I, I wanted you to see the plan as it now stands, just to get an idea of what it's gonna look like. And I will send you a Dropbox link to the absolute current plan, if you'd rather read it on your computers in the absolute, absolute current version. Because we're working on this all the time, so, since I had to give you these copies 10 days ago, there's been a lot of work done since then. So just to tell you that this is a good example of what we're doing, but it's not the absolute final.
How close is it to being final? Where do you, on a percentage basis?
This is very close. We, we plan to send it to MAPC at the end of the summer. We probably could do it earlier if I weren't going away, but I, I am going away, so. Right now, in the version that's now online, there's only two small pieces missing. One of them is a table of properties that has to be at the end of the plan. They require a detailed table of all properties of conservation or recreation or municipal There's a summary of that in the plan, but the whole table isn't there. And the only other thing that's missing is, there's a small piece of one of the appendices concerning access for disabled individuals. One of the appendix, appendices, which you actually have, and it's quite long, is a, an analysis of all our recreational facilities in regard to their accessibility according to ADA rules. David Williams has agreed to be the ADA coordinator, which is required in the plan, and you have designated him as such. The one piece that we still don't have is that the town needs a, an appeal procedure by which people with disabilities can appeal to the town for better access, wherever. We don't have an official appeal procedure, and I think Gino tells me that to get that in place would take a vote at town meeting. Is that correct?
Well, to, to amend the, well, actually, I guess it wouldn't, wouldn't be amended with the personnel policy. What we have so far is the personnel policy in regards to handicap accessibility and accommodating persons with disabilities.
Yeah, for employment, yeah.
The, the plan requires a grievance procedure for people who are attempting to use recreation facilities. I mean, generally, that would be if they have a complaint, they go to the town administrator. If they're not satisfied with that outcome, then they appeal to the Board of Selectmen. I mean, it's as simple as that. So, I think it could be probably just adopted as a policy and not by law. And then we could just include it into the plan.
Yeah, we have to, we have to file the plan, it's required, and we can't wait for annual town meeting. So that really leaves us no choice. And if somebody would write that up, then the board could adopt it. But on the issue of disability, I think I had this conversation maybe with you, Gino, at a meeting at the State House, of the grant awarding authorities came up to me and said that they wanna give Sherburne some money so that we could have some trails in town. And when I wrote to the town to say, there's money available, why aren't we using it? The answer was, trails have to be handicap or disability accessible. The whole point is that a trail's not a trail if we discriminate against the, the handicap. So if we just have a natural path in the woods that has roots and, and rocks that you have to jump over and all of that, that discriminates, that doesn't count, state doesn't want that. So you have to actually put down a surface that works for all the citizens of the town to have a trail network. So there's a, a whole weight of, of considerations about being inclusive for diverse constituency, so that all people can get the benefit of these, these trail systems. And that's, not only is there state money available to help do that, but you have to have a process by which those people who feel excluded from these facilities have a right to be heard and to have their grievances addressed in, in some meaningful way. So there is state money out there, but we'd have to make the commitment to do more with trails than just to cut a few branches out of the way and, and hack the...
We've discussed this at length, and that's a good comment. We've taken it really seriously. The Disability Committee and CONCOM and Open Space Committee has discussed this and trying to put that together. I mean, it is, the nature of our trails is such that they're never gonna be fully accessible. This is, it's, it's a question of how you define, define a trail. If you're in Boston, a trail might be a paved or stone path somewhere in Sherburne, that's not what a trail is.
Do you wanna mention the Upper Charles?
Yes, I, I'm getting to that. But the one thing we can do, and that John is helping to drive and seeking funds for, right, is to extend the Upper Charles Rail Trail into Sherburne, right up to Whitney Street, and to use the easement and the land that the town has along... So there's a whole weight of considerations about being inclusive for diverse constituency so that all people can get the benefit of these trail systems. And that's, not only is there state money available to help do that, but you have to have a process by which those people who feel excluded from these facilities have a right to be heard and to have their grievances addressed in some meaningful way. So there is state money out there, but we'd have to make the commitment to do more with trails than just to cut a few branches out of the way and hack the.
We've discussed this at length and that's a good comment. We've taken it really seriously. The Disability Committee and CONCOM and Open Space Committee has discussed this and trying to put that together. I mean, it is, the nature of our trails is such that they're never going to be fully accessible. This is, it's a question of how you define a trail. If you're in Boston, a trail might be a paved or stone path somewhere in Sherburne. That's not what a trail is.
Do you want to mention the Upper Charles?
Yes, I'm getting to that. But the one thing we can do and that John is helping to drive and seeking funds for, right, is to extend the Upper Charles rail trail into Sherburne, right up to Whitney Street, and to use the easement and the land that the town has along that Whitney Farms development, along the rail, to make a good ADA accessible access with a parking at Whitney, ADA accessible access to the rail trail that will go right up to Whitney Street. And that would give access to the entire rail trail from Sherburne through Holliston. And further plans are in the works to extend the rail trail north of Whitney Street to the Barber Reservation and into Framingham. And a team is working on that.
Just to comment on that, I was part of the board that settled a lawsuit with the Whitney Farms Development and as part of that settlement, there was an agreement to provide us essentially with a parking lot for that trail system. So I don't know whether you all are aware of it, but we have the right to have a parking lot there.
Yeah, and Conservation made an agreement to formalize the, just the exact track of the trail from the parking lot. So that's been formally defined and agreed to. And we've applied for some, for some grant money from a state program to make that trail an ADA compliant.
Excellent. I have two comments on the plan. The first was quite an eyebrow raiser for me where it's projected that Sherburne's population is going to drop significantly to 3,600 people from our current population, which is 4,200. So that is huge. And I'm wondering, why do people think that the town of Sherburne is going to start losing residents at that amount? That's on page, by the way, seven.
Page seven, yes. I think what we actually say there is that that was the Metropolitan Area Planning Council forecast into the year 2030. But if you read the rest of that paragraph, we go on to say that that's unrealistic because we have these new housing developments and it's more likely to be up significantly in 2030. At the end of the paragraph, we give some rough number and I forget where that estimate comes from, but over 5,000 in 2030.
My question was, why does MAPC think that the town of Sherburne, and what's their reasoning? What is it that they see?
I think that was a demographic analysis. We went through this a number of years ago. It was the same projection. This is, this is an old number from, I don't know, whenever this was done. And it was done based on demographic projections, age cohort, age cohort projections.
You can see that there was a decrease between 2000 and 2010.
Right.
So they're probably basing it, that was the last census.
It was age cohort based, it was.
Losing 500 people in two years.
That's right.
They don't say who the 500 people are either, so.
But your point is a good one, Paul, because perhaps it's just misleading to have that MAPC figure in there at all.
Why, why include that whole paragraph in that chart?
Well, I think one reason to include it is because it pushes back against MAPC, which made a projection that nobody in this room, I think, thinks is a particularly valid projection, yet it's still out there and MAPC still has some authority over planning dollars and everything else. So I don't know why we wouldn't take issue with it if we think we should take issue with it.
Same number to deal with, with the Housing Protection Plan when we were there. Same conundrum and the consultant kept saying, well, these are the data sets that we have to work with. We have to use the charts that are being produced nationally and even though it doesn't, kept saying, we agree, Sherburne's a small town, it's very quick to, you know, two little changes throw the whole data projection off. So it's really a challenge trying to use the regional planning materials sometimes to, within the guidelines of what we actually have going on here.
It's odd that one part of the state government doesn't agree with the other part of the state government.
But it's not on, it's not on here.
That's exactly what's going on and it's, and Mike's point, this really is important to make issue because it influences everything, including tip. Towns like Sherburne are projected to shrink and therefore that puts us behind on prioritization for transportation money, for housing money, for a lot of things. So the resources and their prioritization of what, of where the state invests are based in large part on the population forecast. And for towns like Sherburne, we're all in this area where we're projected to shrink even though more recent data says that's not going to happen. Or if it is, there's an awful lot of mistakes being done by the other hand in the state government. So it's a good thing, I think, to point it out. It's great you mentioned it and it's, I think, so I think because of that, it belongs in the open space.
Well, thank you. I agree with what Mike said and I agree with what you said, so withdraw my suggestion. The other thing I would comment on is on page 31, the discussion of general chemical. And it just, we have Chuck who was part of a general chemical team, so I'm not sure, Chuck, whether you've seen this or not, but it just struck me as being awfully negative, the way this ended, particularly the last sentence. If I was reading this and wanting to buy a home somewhere, this was a pretty scary thing to put in, in writing like this. And I'm not sure that it is.
I don't think it's completely accurate. I mean, there's concern about the plume continuing to migrate and we in the town of Natick and town of Framingham have all recommended much more extensive monitoring and DEP is doing some of that, but I, yeah, I think that's a pretty unqualified statement.
Says the plume of contamination continues to migrate onto adjacent lands and towards Sherburne. And the last report that I heard was that things have, a lot of things are being done and that some stabilization has occurred and maybe it hasn't gotten a lot worse, but maybe it has. I just don't know. Chuck's our sort of resident expert here.
No, I agree. That could be, that could be qualified. That's pretty scary. I'm scared too, reading, rereading it.
It's certainly accurate to say that it's concern and.
It's a concern, but not.
Maybe it's monitoring or something like that.
Yeah, that's worth monitoring.
Right, and the towns of Sherburne, Natick and Framingham are all urging additional DEP monitoring. It's just too early to tell. As usual, it's fractured bedrock. Nobody quite knows what's going on down there.
Yeah, absolutely. No, this is exactly the kind of thing I'm glad you're catching. This is why we're giving it to you at this point, because.
Those are my comments.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks for reading.
Any other comments from up here? Terrific, thanks, Mary Ann.
Yeah, thanks, Mary Ann.
John and Mary Ann, I don't know if you want to stay. We've got a brief update on a, there's a plan to put in 15 to 16 homes on the old Windy Low site on Route 16 in South Natick. The plan apparently would require a secondary access to Everett Street and there was been some concerns raised about traffic impact and impact on Sherburne. We have a letter from the developer to ask development, they were invited to come tonight, but they've not presented the plan to the Natick Planning Board yet. But we invited the police fire department and planning board to provide any input you have on potential concerns about traffic on the site. Mike, I know this is one of the issues you were concerned about. Any other background?
Well, no, I did ask David to put this on the agenda back when I had control over those sorts of things. And I also spent, as I said before, 20 minutes on Everett Street today because there was a detour from Elliot Street onto Everett Street. It's not a particularly well-designed road for a lot of traffic and I don't know what the plan is because as Chuck said, the plan hasn't been presented yet, but I do think we should be prepared to do a couple of things. One would be to ask the Natick authorities, planning board and whoever else is approving this, to take into account traffic impacts on Sherburne. And second would be to ask our planning board or our town planner to, if you haven't already, to be aware of this and consider what traffic impacts and other impacts might be on Sherburne. It's possible that there won't be any impacts. I don't know how this road is going to be used and it's only 15 or 16 houses, but on the other hand, there is no road there that cuts through like that now. And that's a pretty sleepy road for the most part, a lot of the day, so.
Today, you might have been happy to have that cut through.
Yeah, it would have gotten me out of that problem, wouldn't it?
Is it a reemergency access or is it a?
I don't think anybody knows, but I think just because it was raised by a resident and it's in the process, we ought to not lose track of the fact that, you know, most developments in the Abundings towns, you know, modest sized ones anyway, don't have anything to do with us and probably we aren't concerned about. This one has some potential impact, I guess.
And John, in fact, that's one of the questions. Is it, is it going to be always open or is it just there gated and locked as a backup access for, we just don't know.
Or one direction?
Yep.
Do you know anything more about it, Gino? Have you encountered it?
I know about it, but nothing more.
Yeah, nothing more. Nobody's given you any details on that or anything?
Some of the comments online that I'm sure you wouldn't see because we're Rockland Street residents in Natick, because there is a cut through, which I never realized because we're on this side of it, but because 27 backs up more than 16 coming out, there is a cut through you can dump out of downtown Natick and the fear is they'll, it gives them a straight shot to 16.
Through this neighborhood.
And then they cut back through Butler Street and catch 27 through the lights. I didn't know that was a thing. So that was the fear for the people on Rockland Street, Rockland in Natick, that the 15 houses aren't the issue.
It's the cut through effect, yeah. That makes sense.
Again, it's not Natick residents that are cut through Sherburne, it's Hawkington residents that are cut through Sherburne.
Great.
And I'm always surprised when you use waves, you get detours that are going through clear residential neighborhoods that aren't used to that kind of traffic.
Remain.
Trucks.
Remain comes up on waves as a shortcut for car haulers.
Terrific, any other questions or comments before we move on to the town campus site plan?
Do we want to ask Ted David with talking to the Natick town manager or somebody just to put this on their radar that we're concerned and we'd like to know more?
Yeah, I mean, I can tell them we want to be included and so we know any site plan stuff. I think probably Gino gets a heads up too.
Yeah, good.
I can formally send something over.
We certainly should monitor, find out what's going on and get ourselves on the mailing list. So do you need a motion of some kind or?
I don't know. I mean, I think the consensus of the board would be to have David follow up on that, don't you think?
Terrific.
Jane, I'll go.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Gino.
I will.
You will.
Okay, next on the agenda is the campus, town campus site plan. Sean, do you want to?
Do you want to look at the site plan?
Sure.
Yeah.
I have it.
Terrific.
I didn't see it. Was there anything in the packet on this?
You found the right page.
Sean, this is a new plan since the last time we talked about this? Is it?
Excuse me?
Is this a new plan since the last time we talked about it a couple of months ago? So it's, okay, it's the same one?
No, and if there was any changes since then, my news, you wouldn't pick them up. They're all subsurface.
Okay.
Utility type. I don't know how well we went through this. It's probably pretty hard to see.
Yep.
I don't know if you guys have a copy. This is town hall. Here's the library.
Hey, Sean, can I interrupt for a second? Rick, do you have a way of picking this up so it's on camera?
I can do it if you give me a two seconds.
Sure.
Thank you.
I just think it's going to be good if people at home can follow along.
Starting with the utility stuff that are probably understood as well.
There you go. Perfect. All right, so it's on there now.
So we're, starting below grade. This big circle is the zone, the zone one of the well. There's the well in the center. If you can see it close enough, you can see that the circle actually goes through town hall. So this is why the well is out of compliance to today's standards anyway, because there's parking, there's the air conditioning unit, there's the generator existing that are all within that zone. The original design had the fire suppression tank for the library and the generator sited here at the end of the parking lot, which when you drive in normally, you see cruisers all parked here. That's about where that was going to be, off the parking lot. Obviously, that was too close to the well, so that gets shifted. We needed to shift it somewhere else. It's got a pretty big footprint and you don't want to be putting it where there's ledge or you'll be hammering edge near the well. So late last fall, we found that along the side, which is against the property line to the Costa property and closer to Route 16, the ledge was much deeper. So we'd be able to dig it without hammering ledge. It got it outside, just about outside of the utilities that come in, all the utilities for this building come in from a pole on Route 16 as well as the gas line. So it was a safe place to go. Anywhere towards the front, we already know there's ledge outcrops. Town hall's tank is very small compared to what's getting put in for the library and they hit ledge when they put that in. So the front lawn area was, although it was considered, was never a place where we could site that large tank and the pumps. And the pumps are above grade now. You're not allowed to do what we did before with a bunker. So nobody really would have wanted to see that up the front lawn. So what we did is we redesigned, the design team took and shifted all that, shifted the piping, and that allowed us to be in close proximity to the generator that town hall was already going to replace. That generator's older than the remodel of the town hall. So we were able to buy a larger generator, will buy a larger generator, combine them and feed all of town hall and the life safety circuits at the library from the one generator with several different switches. It also allows the fire pumps to be fed from the power circuit on this side, which doesn't sound like a big deal, but powering it from that transformer versus that one is quite a significant savings in copper wire. So that's kind of the underground. It also basically interrupts all the water lines that for years have been kind of an unknown. We have the bunker that's still shown here, which most people don't realize is still the, I think it's a 5,000 gallon tank, it's still there. Somewhat below grade. It's got a concrete shelter around it. Ideally, we'll remove that. The plumbing right now still goes through that. It doesn't go into that tank, but it leaves town hall, goes into that bunker, leaves the bunker and ends up at the police station and makes its way up the hill to both the library and the community center. Those lines will. Those lines will all be excavated, repaired. The only thing left on an old line will be the community center, obviously, but it'll be repaired and fixed with proper curb stops and valves in this area where it will be excavated.
Those plastic lines?
The new, the new is a two inch plastic line being put in. This is an old copper line.
Oh, is it? Are the other lines copper?
No.
Doesn't matter.
We think there's copper in here. It transitions to four inch duct to go into the police station. But we haven't found the transition.
Okay.
They don't, we don't, we will find it. We know within Brooks, but we, no one's ever found any of these valves, which comes up on a sanitary survey and we've gotten, you know, asked, please define, well, we can't, can't find them. We'll find them with a back truck now. And the intent, just so you know, the plan is to feed everything with temporary lines, which might sound like a big deal, but if you notice, the whole south side of Natick is right now on temporary portable lines. We'll feed the community center, we'll breach that line probably under the lawn. The library's already cut off, or will be, and we just have to feed the police. Police station obviously can't ever go without water, even on a weekend, so we have to feed it. There'll be temporary measures while all the electrical work's getting done, the Town Hall will go on a full generator 24 hours a day for a certain amount of time so that all the site, the electrical work can be done. Ever so, it has to come out, pull the transformer, rewire it for the pump feeds and then drop it back in. I think I might have gone past the drawing that shows the parking. As it's shown right now, I believe there's 14 spaces being created in a mix between the parking between the, basically in front of the police station.
I thought you didn't like angle parking.
Who didn't?
Gino. Does anyone like the angle parking or?
Yeah, I have.
So we're all familiar with what's happening over here, obviously. This is the loop as it was extended. It's still not finished because it doesn't have the curving. The tree's being removed. We took out a couple islands that were really in the way, which allowed some better ADA access for the sidelines. This really didn't change much, those two things did, but the main change from the original plan is this side. Obviously, as soon as we start touching this side, we have to accommodate fire access, which before we touch it, we don't really make it. You can picture that a 10 wheel fire truck doesn't make that corner very well. It's hard to make it right now. So the engineers had to start working with those radiuses. The tank, as shown before, I don't know if I mentioned this, it's five feet below grade to the top, so we're parking on it. The only thing you can't park on, obviously, there's a, there is a structure there. I think it stands eight feet tall, it has the pumps in it and everything else, so that not only, you can't park next to it either because there's a fire hydrant there that obviously they need access to. And we can't restrict access to this building either with all these changes. So there's an increase in traffic flow. It's 20 feet wide now and these spaces remain the same that are out front. There's a couple more there and then obviously these angled spaces. I think these are two extras as well. What ended up happening in the parking spaces to make them fit, actually go beyond the property line that was there. So the stone wall will end up getting rebuilt or not rebuilt. It's our decision, but pushed over slightly. Most of the stone wall's gone right now anyway because that was the access to the Costa property. And this is shaded just because it's going to, they're going to repair that handicap spot, which is advantageous to us because it's all out of grade and not really compliant Those are the major changes in the plan.
Last time we talked about whether you're connecting, whether the roadway that goes between the island, are we going to take, get rid of that and make it a green space or are you going to leave it?
So that is a decision the board can make. It has nothing to do with this plan as it stands, as it's being approved. It certainly has nothing to do with DEP because DEP's looking this way. I tend to think it'll work well. I'd want to make a final decision before we go finish paving, but it doesn't look like we're going to finish pave this year anyway. It's going to be, we'll get pavement back down, I hope, but it won't be the finished course. That'll be next spring.
Sean, can you point out where the well is in the 100 foot on that plan?
On this one?
Yeah.
There's a radius.
There's the well.
Okay.
And there's 100 foot going through.
Okay. So those two spaces were added within the 100 feet?
I don't know if they're added or they're just, I don't think they're added. I think they're just showing the cut and replace because this is, this is one of the material.
So those are existing spaces?
I think these are existing. They're just showing where they have to basically work, pull up asphalt and take it out. I may not have brought the best drawing to show that.
It's more than 100 feet, right?
What's that?
Zone one's, I forgot. It's more than 100 feet.
Zone one for that's 100.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Because it's grandfathered, I think.
I forget what zone two is.
Yeah.
Okay.
They'd never let you do that now.
I started zone 100 because it's grandfathered?
Septic system's located about 125.
There you go.
Because that's our regulation.
Yeah, yeah. For housing, yeah.
So, yeah.
I think that's right, Sean, because I don't think they'd ever let you do 100 feet now.
Sean, any other questions? I know what you're going to ask.
How much does it cost?
I was told there's a number, but I was told I couldn't have it yet. It comes with much disappointment and I let it be known.
For those who didn't watch the earlier meeting, for those who didn't watch the earlier meeting, the question is what are the costs?
Yeah, well, I did say it again just now, but.
Yeah, I mean, as I've said all along.
I don't have the cost implication and I don't have the time.
Okay. So you said there is a cost, but nobody's giving it to you?
There's definitely a cost.
I mean, somebody knows what the cost is and?
Well, the contractor knows, he has a number, but he wouldn't, he was still reviewing it. VP was still reviewing it. And if he handed it to me today, I wouldn't have brought it.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no way I would have brought it. The design team has their pricing consultant who went through, it's pretty complicated if you can picture the amount of deducts and adds and it's going to take some time to take A, B and mix the two and come up with an offer. But there's several things that can happen concurrently with some of the work. The generator's already ordered. It's due in, I think we got an email today, it's due in in August. So it's no longer critical path because it won't be ready for August.
Was it diesel?
It's natural gas.
Oh, is it real?
Yeah.
I guess that's why it's in the zone one.
Yeah, it definitely would not be in the zone one.
What's going to happen to the old generators? Have any resale value or?
It has zero resale value. It's actually against the law to sell it in the United States because it's not compliant to commission standards.
So where can we sell it?
North Korea.
I was told we could.
I'd waverly salvage.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not sure.
You're not helping our diplomatic efforts at all here.
Sell it to North Korea.
I suppose maybe I could auction it legally, but I'm not going to sell it.
We'll see on eBay right after this.
All right, good. Thanks, Sean. This is great.
Well, if I could, Sean and I disagree on this plan and he knows it and I'm going to be voting no. I can give you the long version or the short version, but I'll give you the short version. As you all know, the way this plan is set up is in a denied mode at DEP and we have asked for reconsideration of that denial and papers have been submitted. DEP's not comfortable with this plan. I believe that we're better off working cooperatively with DEP and with more cooperation, we would get the denial removed faster. And ultimately, DEP is looking for better environmental and public health, public safety considerations.
And the concerns are the well. Is there anything concerned other than the well or is the concerns around the well, DEP's?
I don't know all the details. I just know they're uncomfortable with this. So for all those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
Do we have the correspondence from DEP?
There was nothing in the packet here at all. It wasn't even the plan.
Yeah, it was a while ago you had the, you guys were copying on.
I know what other responses.
Is there communication that's called?
In the recent middle. And so this week, I reached out directly. I hesitated to do it for quite a while because there was some communication with DEP that was unfortunate between some contractors and subcontractors, which politically wasn't really all that great for us. And we have Whitewater representing us with DEP, so because they're the operator of the well, I left it to them. I did finally reach out to Zach Peters just the other day via email, just letting him know that I was going to be presenting tonight, hoping to at least give an update. His response was that he expects we'll see something early next week. That's really all I can ask for. I don't, I know for a fact that lots of people will confirm that they're pretty swamped the northeast region.
And I remember responses, they were, they could be subjective. He'd go either way in giving a judgment, so you don't want to annoy him. You don't want to nag. I get that.
Right. Thank you. I mean, it's not an ideal plan. The ideal plan is that well goes away. And if the well went away, actually, the tank would have to go away. We wouldn't even need it, but we're a decade late on that.
Sean, are you looking for an approval from the board on this plan?
Or is this just an update?
Mechanically, yeah. I mean, at some point, we're going to get to the point where you, being the building owner, hasn't approved a plan that the contractor's working on a price for, DEP's working on approval of.
Are we, are we at that point? Is this?
We could be. I mean, yeah, I don't have an approval in hand from DEP, but we've directed the contractor to price this work up. The design team has spent a significant amount of time working on it. I'm not sure how that path would go to turn it around and come up with something, you know? Small details come up. We, there was, there was some subsurface things that we released to DEP a couple weeks ago, but it had to do with the trenching.
I was going to say, does DEP, are they actually reviewing this plan? I thought they were reviewing kind of the current noncompliance issues.
No, they reviewed this entire packet, which I thought we sent you, but didn't.
I saw the letter. I saw the response, the comments that we sent out. That's all I had.
And in with it was this entire set of drawings. They wanted this entire set of drawings. They wanted the exact particulars of what was going, because it's a significant amount of work inside that zone.
I remember reference attachments, but I don't think we got the attachment. That almost doesn't matter. If they are actually looking at it now and they're going to provide a response early next week, do we think we're going to have a meeting?
I'm thinking, just a couple things here. Like Paul said, if DEP comes back to us and say no on this anyway, I mean, why are we even voting on it? Number two, we still don't have the costs or the time or any, I think there's, there's no way I could vote to support this with where it's at right now. I think we need to hear what the DEP thinks and we want to hear some estimation of what it's going to cost before I could ever support anything.
So Mary reached out and I think the trustees will look in for an executive session in July.
So Sean, we've heard from Paul that he has reason to think that DEP's not going to approve this. We've heard from you that there really are not a lot of other options for how to handle the tank and the generator and the piping. So if DEP disapproves this, what's the next step? What's Plan B? Is there a Plan B?
There are options. They cost money.
It's really Plan C. This was Plan B. All right. So, okay, that's semantics. Do you have, do you have another answer? And is it just that it costs money or is it that it's not practical to do it the way this whole place is configured?
If I can say this, because I suspect what happened.
People get it too, yeah.
Yeah, what I suspect will happen, it's not going to be a yes, no. It's not going to be approved or not approved. They're going to say, because remember we had many responses, something like, say, okay, we don't agree with this one. So you're going to address the issue about impervious area. Do you know what I'm trying to say? Or you're going to address maybe the crossing of the trenching. So it's going to be kind of a line item. So I don't think Sean can come up with a Plan B, C or D because you don't know what their issue is going to be. They're not going to be like, reject it and mail it back to you. They're going to go, they're going to go through responses and say like, well, fine, fine, no, fine, fine, no, you know, and you're just going to address those no's.
Yeah, there's a very detailed listing of their concerns and the.
That's right. So I suspect impervious area within the water, I suspect that'll be one of them and then we'll put in a rain guard or something. You know what I mean? That's, and I think you have to kind of see that, see the responses and then, then know better.
So is it, so is it a cost factor? Is that the reason we haven't sort of proactively tried to address as many of DEP's comments like that with solutions that they might like better than whatever we gave them?
Well, I mean, to be perfectly blunt, DEP doesn't like that well there.
I understand.
We put our septic system 125 feet away from that well.
Yep.
I'm not even sure that was allowed then, but either way, the first thing they looked at, it wasn't this version of the plan. They said, what is that next door to the well? So there's actually nothing we could do with that well to make them happy. The building's in it, the generator's in it. The best option would be take that well and go put it on the other side of town and feed, you know, an eight inch water main that we installed 20 years ago. That would make DEP happy with this site. But shy of that, we have to do something between those two.
Well, is DEP looking at this big lot we've got next door and saying, why don't you put the well on that big lot next door?
Why isn't, why isn't?
The well?
Yeah.
We almost probably could never put the well on that.
Why not?
Because this has 100 foot radius. That well would need three or 400 foot radius and you don't have it.
Well, we.
Because it's new.
And it would take a couple of years to get a well out there and just the permitting, I'm told, would be a couple hundred thousand dollars. And you're not even guaranteed you're going to get good well there.
The zone one would be.
The protection and then you would.
So the building would still be, be within the zone well? You'd just.
You'd lose all the grandfathering.
Well, the two roads would.
Right, right, right.
Chuck, Nancy has.
Remember, these two roads are merging together. There's no point in that, that you'd get far enough away from that septic system and away from those two roads and Scott's house. We'd have to buy his house too.
There is a existing well there.
For the house.
It's not a public water supply.
Well, actually, if they thought hard enough about that existing well, and I still think they might, they'd make us ground fill that well and abandon it because we don't know that it doesn't communicate with that well. It's pretty close. It's only about 180 feet or something.
When we tore down the house, we made sure that the well stayed and was kept. So there is an existing well there.
The open wells were over here and they got filled.
But the other, the other issue also is longer term, eventually, we're going to have to expand Town Hall to the south. And so now we're going to have this building, when the time comes to do work on this building. I don't think you were part of the rebuilding of this town building, but some of us were, like I was. And a lot of constraints about that, but the idea always was that if we, ultimately 10 years, 20, 30 years from now, we're going to have to expand Town Hall to the south. That's south. Yes, it's just the plan has north to the right. So all the construction that's ultimately going to take place for the, our local government is going to be moving even more towards the well, if not on top of the well.
That's a mute subject because the well and the tank will be useless by then. Because long before we get to the point where we have to do that, we need a water supply. We've already, we've already. We've already, we've already exhausted that, and we can't do any more work here. DEP's not gonna let us do anything more with that well there. And they're certainly not gonna let us put an addition on it.
But that's the whole point, that relying on that well at this point doesn't even kick the can down the road. It just kicks the can to the curb.
It was a colossal waste of money. Yeah. I agree. It shouldn't be there. We shouldn't have spent money on it. We should have fixed that before we started the addition, but we can't, we can't change that now. That's a huge liability for the town, and I, we have done nothing to improve it. That still exists. But that's a topic for the town center water options, because this building needs water, that building needs water, that building needs water, and the one across the street, and the two churches do, and they all need fire suppression, too, to be up to compliance.
It's not just a liability, it's just a question of the health and safety of people, and the health and safety of people who work in this building, and in the library, and in adjacent areas. That's why I can't support this plan.
Nancy?
If this gets rejected, can we consider the old, the cellar hole that we filled, which I think would be outside your 100-foot thing? And you know that's not ledge because we filled the sizable cellar hole that the house was on, and getting that out and putting your tank in there, I mean, it would mean a little bit longer run, but you would be running outside...
The tank is outside. It's the digging right next to the well that they're concerned about. And we're stuck doing that either way. We can't get to the caustic property without going by the well. We can't get there.
So, it's the trenching within the...
Right. I got the tank out. That's why we did that.
You can't trench in front of Town Hall, could you?
Right.
Is that another option?
What?
In front of the Town Hall?
We talked about going to the right side.
Instead of going, instead of going out towards 16 and in front of Town Hall?
Oh, no.
Can't trench it that way? Then it doesn't trench through the...
The distance would be such that, I mean, it almost wouldn't work hydraulically. You gotta remember, that's the fire, there's huge fire pumps in that protecting that building in lieu of having a city water community.
This is why I wanted some money in the, from the state on the environmental bond issue that David and I were talking about. Because if we had state money to fund this, and I think they would fund it, if we had $2 or $3 million from the state to fix this, and they want us to fix it, and there's motivation to fix it, it would change the economics. It would relieve the taxpayers of a huge potential expenditure, whether we do it now or whether we do it 10 years from now, and so on. There is, there is, there is an interest in the state to fix this problem with us, if we're willing to work collaboratively and cooperatively with them.
I'm saying, the problem's not on this plan. The problem starts here and ends at Pine Hill and everywhere in between. Don't fix this. There's 400 kids up at Pine Hill drinking out of a well that's right next to the cemetery. That's the same problem. We're not gonna spend $2 million fixing this. We got a library that's half-finished. We have to finish it. I wish we weren't putting a fire tank in at all. If we had a water main that had water in it, we wouldn't need a tank or pumps or the generator for that matter. It'd gravity feed from Pine Hill. But that's not what we're fixing right now. We have to finish this library, and if we become the delay on the library, then option B doesn't really matter, and neither does option C.
But if we can't get a plan approved from DEP, we can't finish it anyway. That's the problem. If this plan, we don't know whether this plan's even approved, so that's, that's the point.
We don't. But it's a lot closer than it was.
How soon really do you need the segment's vote? Because really, I mean, if DEP, next week, the week after, they actually provide comments, we're meeting again on the 12th, right? Something like that?
11.
11.
11. We get plenty of meetings.
So, we're meeting again then. I mean, is it literally, I mean, is it gonna be change orders if we don't approve this? You know what I mean? Is it delays?
No, no.
To schedule the project?
No, I don't want you to vote on this tonight.
Now, I think it'd be a lot of comfort levels if we saw that, because like I said, I suspect, and I could be wrong, the DEP's comment's gonna be kind of line item, and things, and they can be addressed. Because I actually, you know, I agree with Sean here, where it is, no matter what, that well can't really move nearby, because you lose all your grandfathering, you have your zone 1 right there, and it's either, I agree with them, that's either a full water supply or it's just grandfathered well. You know, there's no other solution in that way, and you just gotta do with what you have. You know what I mean? But I'd like to see the line item before we actually approve it. It makes sense, because they're gonna, I suspect they're gonna talk about the trenching and the impervious surface, you know, the things, basically wherever we went and said like, we're not in compliance, but whatever, you know, and that's, that's where they're gonna have the comments to it.
So, I agree with Eric. I think we've gotta act in the world we actually live in, not the imaginary world where DEP's giving us money that they're not giving us. I think we've gotta take care of business. When DEP tells us what we need to do, do it and get the library project going, and if they tell us we can't do it, then we've got a different decision to make.
Right. It at least gives us a direction.
So, assuming we hear back from DEP, this will be an agenda item in our next meeting, either the 11th or the 12th, so...
Well, I'd like you to put it as an agenda item now for your next meeting, so I have a deadline to give to the contractor that we need some real notice.
Fine.
Because I'm not doing this again.
Right. Let's put it on the agenda.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Anything else? Thanks, Sean. Sharon, we're ready for item four, the financial operational matters.
And that's typically when I give you an update on the library construction project. And since last, the last time I updated you, I haven't received any additional invoices. We haven't received any additional forecasting, so it's, I have no update.
No news.
No news, yeah.
But I had a question. Earlier today, I had asked about the proposed transfers for year-end, and people told me, look at your memos. And I looked at your memos, and there are all these expenditures and percentages, and it goes on for pages and pages.
Yes.
And my non-accounting world, could we just have a little chart saying, it's like six numbers that we're looking at right now? They may change, but I'd like to see if we're looking at a big hole, or are we looking at small little adjustments like that? I really didn't get a sense.
I can, I can do that very quickly, and I can actually send you something tomorrow.
I bet you Steve would probably like to see it. Steve, did you hear what Paul was asking?
Sorry, I did not know.
He's, she's gonna come up with a chart for the different potential transfers coming up, and I figured it'd be very helpful for you guys as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't think we have those numbers yet, correct?
No, I mean, we're still, you know, and we still have another week and a half before we close things out, but I'm definitely, you know, giving people information on a weekly basis and letting them know that it's critical, you know, that people stay.
So, you know, in addition to the meeting on the 11th, we scheduled tentatively a meeting on the 12th in case there's some issues that come up at the last minute.
So, then we can have another meeting the next day if we need to resolve anything.
Okay. I can ask my team, I'm not available, so I can ask my team.
I think we're skeptical that we'll need it, but we wanted to go ahead and put it on the agenda.
Yeah, well, I can certainly get something out tomorrow, and then, you know, as, as more information becomes available, I'll let you know. I can do that.
David, do we have a town administrator report?
Yep, just a few items. Council on Aging held its first thank you to our first responders breakfast at the Pilgrim Church this past Monday morning, and thank you to the COA staff and volunteers who helped make the breakfast a big success and a couple of people...
Yeah, it was, that was a tremendous event. That was really nice. It was really well done. It was a great idea.
We've scheduled the joint meeting with Advisory Committee for July 11th, and the memory statue restoration work has been completed. I don't know if you've seen the debris moved away from it. We've invited Peggy Novak and Suzie Wheelwright to speak about the project. We don't have a date on that yet.
Just to say on the memory statue, just a funny anecdote, when we would drive by it, my daughter has been into Harry Potter, and she said it looked like a dementor while they were doing the, while they were doing the work with the black cover on it.
Then the, there was a notice that went out, the railroad crossing on Prospect Street near Coolidge Street will be closed from 7:00 AM Friday until late afternoon, Friday, June 22nd until late afternoon Monday, June 25th, and to seek alternate routes and plan accordingly. And Prospect Street residents will not be able to access their homes via Coolidge Street during this timeframe.
I had a question on that. Do we know, are they doing a series of improvements, or is this just kind of one timer? Because they're improving the line in general, you know what I mean? So, are we gonna see other crossings improved?
Yeah. I mean, I assume that this would take care of it, and they move on to the next crossing, but I don't know if Sean knows.
That crossing's pretty messed up, isn't it? At least the last time I crossed it. It's a bad location.
It is. I mean, I'm hoping it's a one-time, but I'll find out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, might like just do other ones in town, you know what I mean?